Good evening, it's six fifteen and I'll call the July thirty first Cedar Springs Public School Board meeting to order. And if you would please rise with me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America. The stands one nation under God, in the name of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and can we have a roll call please Secretary Slager?
Yes, so trustee Bowser.
She is absent and with her new brandy.
Uh trustee Patton.
Here.
Trustee Vanderhyde.
Here.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Here.
Secretary Slager here, Vice President Shoffner.
Here.
President Reed.
Here. Thank you, and we have established a forum for tonight's meeting. That brings us to the adoption of the agenda and I would entertain a motion for as presented.
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? Having none, Vice President Shoffner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Trustee Vanderhyde.
Yes.
Trustee Patton.
Yes.
President Reed, yes. The agenda is adopted, that brings us to gratitudes. I'm grateful for internet that works, I mean just that little look we had, just rattles, trust me, so glad we had alternatives.
That, that is a great reflection, as disturbing as it is for us, you know, think about those times when internet goes down across the district and teachers like Carrie are needing it to launch today, it is, uh it may seem like a really little thing that just plays in the background, but it's critical to peace and a little bit of serenity in the work.
I'm grateful for the work that I know that our staff is putting in over the summer, I know that it's a misnomer that teachers get their summers off. Uh so I appreciate everything that they're doing over the summer to get ready for next year.
And, and we've said it before too, but just the crews working behind the scenes just all the time, I mean it just seems like, you know, just overdrive in the summer, so yeah, I just appreciate that and I know we're right in the heat of it now.
I framed it, uh we're one Christmas break and one full spring break away from the first day of school.
Yes, there's been a little shuffling at our house and things are starting to get ready for this upcoming year, so it's excitement building and I'm just grateful, you know, it's, it's gonna be a good year.
Everybody's checking their calendars more, thinking, work. Alright, we'll move on to our consent items and I would entertain a motion for as presented.
So. Support.
Vice President Shoffner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Trustee Vanderhyde.
Yes.
Trustee Patton.
Yes.
President Reed, yes, consent items are approved as presented. Discussion item A, Beach Elementary School Construction Bid Recommendations with Russell Gray and Steve Dateman with Triangle Construction.
We actually have three members of the Triangle here with us tonight, so Scott Jernberg is here uh as well as Mike Repthing, uh so they're joining Steve, they've been allies with us arm in arm really since before, uh really since the fall of twenty eighteen when we first started looking at, you know, what the facility was for the building, but grateful that they could come and be a part of this meeting tonight to answer any questions that you may have about the bids that are ready for you, uh as well as any of the other projects that are going on around campus. Turn it over to Russell or to the team and then it can get started.
Yeah, I really, yeah, I want the Triangle team to talk some more nuts and bolts, but just um I, maybe my gratitude a little bit late, is just the work on design team and Triangle's team examining um making sure this project is well thought out, gonna serve our needs of our students and teachers, um thinking through all the details before we actually start putting pen and paper and uh the, the, the bid process showed that upfront work it's permitting where we expected it to render and a lot of that's because there wasn't a lot of best we were really appreciate that and then uh yeah, so members up so Steve can share that as well. But yeah, all right, we, we've talked in this space a little bit before, but our building administration, our teachers, our maintenance staffs, um IT, uh all had a voice in designing this building and so they all know what's kinda coming and what to expect and they've all been able to put their fingerprints on this space and um food service too, designing the layout of the kitchen and the serving area. Um so, really happy with the number of people that had a voice in the design and um real excited about the hopeful lack of surprises we have coming in this project, um just people having had so many voices and I feel that's why.
Yeah, it was interesting, I, um, I understand, district on the south end of the county, I had to go back out for another uh bond of um over fifty million dollars last year to cover, they passed a bond in twenty eighteen and then they had to go back out to their voters for, and ask for fifty no, the fifty million more dollars to help cover, to complete the first set of projects and then they added a couple more projects on and I asked the team like, how, how does that happen, you know, because that's been so far away from our experience. And it, it really is, it's a, it's a reflection of the just quality work that they do on the lead side of things. Um and then also the, you know, when we have our meetings with Triangle and our team and in GMV um they're not always, you know, um, you know, uh, cantanyan. I mean, there are times when we're respectful of each other, but there's some good questioning about, have you, did you think of this or did, why are you doing that? That's gonna cost more money and so I just think that insight that, that the Triangle team brings to the table is really um A, it's being reflected in the quality of work uh that's being completed on campus. Um B, it's representative of the quality of individuals uh that they're, that they're bringing to the table. Uh let's see, it's being reflected in the bottom, you know, we're coming in um with pricing that allows us to honor, you know, we said we were gonna do this project for this amount of money to our community and it's happened. So we're not, we're not having to say, oh, sorry, we didn't take into consideration the fact that, you know, there was gonna be a pandemic that could crush things or impacted markets or um so there's, there's a lot, there's a lot to be said about the quality of the work that Triangle does and databases.
So it's, it is truly from our perspective, a team effort, you know, you have a lot of great leaders here in the district, from Scott and Marty and Russell Bell through your, through your ranch, your principles, who have been over backwards to help us be successful so that they too can be successful. And it's that true team approach of, little compromise here helps us get it done a little bit faster, we can put things back in order, let the kids have it faster and sooner. It's that collaborative approach that's been extremely successful for all of us as a group, so. My hats off to your teachers and your staff along with everybody here at the community, from the board, Scott and his team's leadership and it's paying dividends across all facets of all the people. Okay, I, I didn't bring my glasses, can you make that a bigger one? Okay, so tonight what uh Triangle would like to present is the Beach Elementary, can we, we've been here before you earlier with a little bit of the demolition package, so this is excuse me, this is, this, this is the second and the, and last half of where the beach stands right now. So we had a bid day probably a week, week and a half ago where we had approximately seventy to eighty bidders come to the district that wanted to play a part in all the different work categories that we have established based on the documents that were presented to GMV of all the months of design work that, that the whole entire group has been working on behind the scenes. And what we did is we took those drawings and we dissected them into very specific and organized work scopes that represent all the different facets from roofing to mechanical to electrical, temperature controls, testing balance, drywall, concrete, asphalt, you name it, we broke it into packages that represent this portion of West Michigan. We, we've been able to study and organize our thoughts and our groups with these work scopes so that we maximize the best bidders in the community to be a part of this project. And this prime example of the biggest, or one of the largest pieces of, of this bond shows that A, we had the contractors, B, we had the right contractors and we had great quality contractors. There was great participation from your local community, one of the biggest contractors who's literally just down the road, who's Northwest Tent Mechanical. They made this project a priority, they kind of let us know ahead of time, hey, we're really going after this one, we were all for it, we wanted them to be a part of it. They are your local technical contractor, so they're very happy to be back in the district, working with the team and being a part of this project. So this evening, those contractors are all represented in the very first line item um for the seventeen million and oh ninety-eight one sixty, that's those twenty-three work categories of all the contractors combined. Then knowing that we have to deal with other entities that's, I'll say the correct verbiage is, we can't control gas, you know, hooking up new gas service, hooking up water, or hooking up power, or things like that. We set aside this next group of items, which is our owner allowance. And we don't like to assign this to the subs, we like to manage this on behalf of the district so that if we can work directly with consumers' power or with the gas company, those are dollars that are only spent to the quote that is provided by those man, by those representatives. In turn, if we don't spend those dollars, they move right back into the owner's contingency for other items that may become wish list items or other projects down the road further, so even though you see some large numbers below the cost, those are dollars that we're going to manage with the anticipation that when returning as many of those dollars back to the districts, whether it's the road improvements or it's the oxygen for the high school or some of the other projects that Scott and Russell and Marty will be working on in the future, those are all part of our Triangle goals to return those dollars back to you to use in other areas for the benefit of the district. So not only, as you can see by the budget verification, did we do really well with the contractors we brought on board, we're managing the allowance dollars, and if you can slide down just a little bit, Marty, for me. As you look through, you know, the GCs, those are insurance bonds, porta potties, dumpsters, everything that goes into it, those are some big numbers. But again, those are not assigned to contractors, those are managed buckets of money that we turn, like to return back. The easiest way I can explain it is if we looked at Cedar Trails, the middle school project, um eventually Red Hawk, when we finish that one here in the near future, there will be dollars and cents in some of these buckets that will transfer back out of those projects into future projects because we like to manage them on the road ahead. So overall, what we're looking for this evening is an approval of twenty million nine hundred and seventy-three thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars for all the subcontracted work. And then that is the portion of the contract that will be assigned to the Triangle and the subcontractors. Down below that, if you can slide out just a little bit further for me, Marty. These are four line items. The first one was the package I referred to earlier as pre-approved by the boards, we didn't wanna ask for your approval twice, so it's listed below. But the three twenty-four was the demo of the existing Beach Elementary. The next three line items are line items that are specifically POs that are written by Marty and Russell with Scott's approval for subcontracted work that your team is doing directly. There is a benefits by having the food service equipment in the playground directed, directly purchased by the school. You get discounts, you get tax credits, you get other things that when you buy direct, you have more buying power with your dollars. So those are numbers and pieces that are being allocated separately. We're going to get those and organize them into our schedule, when, when Mike does his construction schedule, he'll grab that information, assign it to our contractors, we'll organize the whole schedule and turn it over on time, on, you know, on time, on budget, like, like we'd like, we'd like to say. But those pieces are being bought out directly by the schools. So overall, you have the twenty million nine seventy-three, nine fifteen, and you have the two oh one fifty-two and the two fifty. Those are the three buckets, or sorry, excuse me, four buckets of dollars that we're asking for approval on this evening. And if there's any questions, myself and my team is ready to, ready and willing to answer those questions.
In the packet, they have the summary and then down below is each, a breakdown of each of the different categories that Scott explained. Um Scott, can you just go into the difference between the budget verification, the total construction cost that twenty-three, six, forty-nine?
So if you look at it. Yeah, so roughly just about two point, what was it, two point three million dollars difference, maybe a little bit more, maybe a little less. Um, to Scott's earlier comment, when we sat down and three or four years ago when we started this process, you know, Triangle has in my lifetime been doing K twelve construction for almost thirty years of construction. We have a lot of backup data that telegraphs into a one-year, two-year, three-year, four-year, five-year long bond project. What are the typical percentages that we see for projects that, you know, are, how much, how much should that percentage be that if you pass the bond on year two thousand and it's two thousand and, you know, say, say it's two thousand and twenty, but the work doesn't start till two twenty-four, what should the cost be over that four-year lag time? Because as we all know, they passed the bond four or five years ago and we're just now getting ready to construction, so how did we hit our marks? We have that type of history that helps us outline and give districts such as yourself the right equation, the right playbook with the right numbers so that, to Scott's point, we aren't that school south of Grand Rapids that's going back to the community going, oh, we messed up, we, we missed it by fifty million dollars, we need to go all back for more, you need to raise taxes or whatever you need to do. That's not in our playbook. We're, we've done it long enough, we've seen enough of the situations, we know how to put you in the best position forward. Those dollars are reflected. The, the piece that is probably, the best thing I can tell the district and the entire board this evening is you have a very, very strong core group of contractors that live, that have a lot of their staff and their kids going to school here at Cedar Springs. And this was a project that everybody put at the top of their list. Everybody knew that they had to sharpen their pencil, everybody knew that if they wanted this, they had to go get it. From the Northwest Tents to some of the other contractors that are here, you were the very best beneficiary of the most aggressive dollars to get these jobs done. And Triangle's vetted all of these subs out, they're all financially very strong, very sound, everybody's checked every box that we can find to make sure that they're fully compliant with everything down the road and the district was the beneficiary. You, you know, simply put, to be, you know, five to eight percent under budget is immensely wonderful from the standpoint that it gives you options down the road. But honestly, truthfully, that's due to the contractors that came to the table. I mean, we're seven, eight, nine bidders in a category. I have other school districts that would love to have half of those numbers because they're in outlying districts that don't have the quality staff members that live inside their district that wanna be a player here, that's the benefit that you have in this, this community. You guys are blessed with so many hardworking families that wanna be a part of your team, a part of your school. So that's, that's the huge benefit, that's the number one driving number that you see this evening, that you saw this evening. And we've been really, really good on all of our budgets, not gonna, we got a couple more to go, but from the middle school to Cedar Trails to Red Hawk and to Cedar View, we've hit our marks pretty well. The design process that Scott alluded to earlier, we stayed very focused. Some of those tough discussions where Scott didn't use all the adjectives that were out on the table, we were holding people accountable. You know, from, from potentially some of the design team to even some of the owners team that says, hey, this is what the bond language says, this is what we're working on, this is what we have to work with, this is what we're gonna put in the building. And we all worked together to say, yep, we have to stay here, and we did a lot of estimating. We did more estimates probably on this building than we have a lot of the other projects just to make sure that we didn't leave the path, that we stayed on the right course, that we were gonna be right where we wanted to be at the finish. And the finish line shows you where, how hard we all went, so. Any other questions or comments, concerns, anything that I can answer for you?
Well, I say thank you.
Oh, well, thank you for letting us be here and working in the community, it's been a blessing.
Yeah, I just appreciate hearing just a little bit of the background and, and process and, and, and I like hearing that it's not always smooth and cantanyan. So I mean, I, I think that's, I mean, I think that's healthy, you know, and you do have to wrestle through, through things and, and meet the bottom line, so I just, yes, I appreciate you sharing just more about that process and, and your experience, so.
Thank you for letting us be here, because it is, you know, Mike's daughter will be going to some of these schools that he's working on and it's, it's, it's all about being family.
And you will actually be a Beach Senior Player candidate yourself.
I appreciate the detail on the numbers, just a question, I know um some, some places are seeing shortages in material even though it's not COVID now, it's due to Ukraine-Russia conflict where countries who were getting supplies from there are now buying out the US supplies, are we seeing any shortages in the industry that may impact the construction project that you're aware of?
Part of the design process, we took all of those questions into account. So I'll give you an example and it's maybe a little bit long-winded, when we did the high school, we couldn't get Joyce's deck because Amazon was building all their buildings and I wouldn't get steel Joyce and the roof deck for fifty-some weeks. So we pivoted, your high school was built with precast plank or between the floors and the roof. Okay, well, that was a construction industry pivot. Well, that pivot went so far, Amazon backed off on their construction and now you can get Joyce's deck in a shorter period of time and cheaper than when we could have bought it two years ago. So the beneficiary is A, the district, this particular building, Beach, is back in with Joyce's deck because A, I can get it faster, B, it's now cheaper than what it was before because their market dropped out and they want the business back. We pivoted in the design to maximize your dollars. Are there still some items out there that are of a concern for lead times? Yes. But this particular building, because it has a sixteen to twenty-month window of construction, gives us the long lead time and the ramp up to check all the boxes on the long lead items and put them in place when we needed to. If this had been a summer renovation, similar to a Red Hawk or a Cedar Trail where we needed twenty-five mechanical units, we probably, like we've done in the past, we would have come to the board three to six months in advance and said, yep, here's your mechanical package, we need to pre-purchase these so that I can have them on the day we need to start. Mechanical units are getting better, okay, they're not fifty weeks anymore, they're down into the twelve to twenty-week range, which is acceptable. Now the items that are out there that are causing us pain are emergency generators, you know, similar backup ones that we've been trying to get for Red Hawk, but also it's the electrical panels, your, your twelve-hundred amp arc arresting panels, fifty-two to a hundred and four weeks, somewhere in between, they, they, sometimes they tell us, sometimes they don't. This new building is gonna have a couple of those size panels. So we're already working to try and streamline the submittals to get them approved, get that order in as fast as we can so that by the time we need to turn power on for final equipment, we'll have all the new equipment. So we automatically incorporate temporary smaller panels in different places so that we can still turn on lights, we can still do what we need to do and we can test things. And then we'll pull that panel off and put the final one in when we're ready. So we've become quarters, we save a lot of pumps, we save a lot of mechanical equipment, we save a lot of electrical equipment because we never know when we're gonna need it for a renovation or if, if Russell goes, hey, I had a pump go down, remember that temporary one we bought for Cedar Trails, is it still here, can we reuse it? And we say, yep, or we just took four out of another, another building in another district, I can get my hands on them, do you need them? We barter and share like that all the time alongside our projects for your benefit.
Thank you.
So if I can add to that, to in the post-bid with every apparent bidder, Triangle asked that exact same question just to identify those potential barriers and like, like Scott said, most of these are so far out that it seems like there's not gonna be a problem, but except for the, maybe the exceptions that was mentioned. But even if there was anywhere, if maybe that might be a problem down the road, if they're, you're working with those contractors now, get that material ordered, you have to store it, they, you know, whatever they have to do, they're already identifying the reason.
Typically, we have a plan B and we stay with plan A until the very last second and if we have to pivot and use plan B, we use it. And it's already factored into what we're doing, um and that's just the way we are, we're proactive planners, thinkers to be there for the district and put the plan together and implement it and make it happen. So the best thing we can do is say, yep, we're ahead of schedule, your staff is to move in a little bit early or something fun like that and, and that's the benefit of being ready to go.
More than that, this, this project adds is we are repurposing and reusing a certain portion of the existing building to accomplish some of our early phase goals while actually tapping into existing utility systems in a temporary manner so that when those longer lead items catch up the project, they can then be switched over in that last summer to the permanent, um final spot. So it's a lot of creative problem solving, it's a lot of efficient decision-making by the staff of, of CSBS and a, a good design that we had a great leader, that a design team that helped us kinda understand those challenges and they actually work within the design that wants to make some of those public pieces fit together and overcome a lot of issues.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
You know where to find us.
Thank you, Scott. If I could introduce a couple of other people from our facilities team. Uh so Alexa Newman is here and Stafford Trapp are here and they're a part of the team that uh Russell helps to lead to make sure that we're having, that our, that our users, the guests, our students, our staff are having a positive experience when they're on our campus, that's really what it's all about. So grateful that they're here tonight, they're gonna help lead our tour uh in a little bit, um but just wanna acknowledge their work and their efforts, they really, they're making a difference. I was telling Russell the other day, the number of calls that I've had this year related to facilities, I don't remember the last time I had a call or anything, so. And that's a, that's a pretty significant thing because uh it was routine when my first got there, so, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for everybody coming out and sharing their evening with us, we appreciate that.
Scott, we're in the, the row addition, you're alone.
Oh, yeah, thank you, thank you. So uh there's a second uh addition or a second um attachment, Marty?
Yes, part of our early conversations with the beach design was how to help aid traffic flow in congestion with the bus traffic and to pick up. So it's decided on a new west parking lot for Red, our Red Hawk to put a vertical drive in that connects up towards the administrative parking area down here at the bottom of this hill. So in order to do that, um we need to increase the contingency costs as part of Red Hawk. These are dollars that would have been part of that beach budget, but are shifting over into Red Hawk. Um so we can accomplish that in this summer, um so we'll get started, what, tomorrow, Mike? So what we identified though, we wanted to break that apart so we could get an earlier start on it with contractors that were already on board in the district. We figured out that through pricing exercise and, you know, we're able to get it within a reasonable budget value um that's reflective of what it would have benefited as a part of the overall beach design. But what it'll do is allow for two um circles of traffic, for one for students and parents and one for uh the bus traffic. And I think it'll really improve congestion versus us getting started and then waiting until next year for it in as part of the beach project, so. For that reason, uh we're also improving some of the site, security and lighting as part of it, uh just kind of finishing off that west loop as the beach design uh kind of develops, so. That's the hundred and eleven thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars and seventy-nine cents that not currently in the Red Hawk project that will be coming out of uh some of the bonds or some of the uh the beach savings to, to accommodate that.
So it's gonna connect Red Hawk to up here to.
Yeah, when we go, when we open the tour, we can finish the leaves, where we're gonna push the new drive through or pull the drive through.
So yeah, it's, it's the west side of the west, new west parking lot of Red Hawk where the new district main offices are gonna be, it's basically just a vertical connector drive directly up to the existing part of the lab, the north.
Okay, well, yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll look at it, sorry, but this, something else that we talked through with the, with the childhood staff on helping increase their efficiency and safety on their drop-offs, so now parents can drop off head north past our building and then go to this new drive, south to the west lot, do an actual route by the building and then exit the same way without intersecting with the beach traffic. So it's two, separating those two streams of traffic, which will both be beneficial now, but it'll be extra beneficial the way that the beach area starts getting more congested and that, that destruction stuff.
Yeah, when we did the original design work for the parking at Red Hawk, I tried Uh, trying to determine how to best utilize that space and to be efficient with the dollars. Uh, we, we constructed it as it currently is, but we also knew that there may be a time in the future when we would want to expand traffic, uh either parking or traffic flow to the north. Uh, and this is kind of a compromise scenario. We're not expanding tra- uh parking yet to the north, but we are enhancing our traffic flow a- again to create two separate loops uh for parents uh dropping off, picking up at beach and dropping off and picking up at Red Hawk. So hopefully people will just follow directions and do it, follow the signs.
So I just want to share since we've got everybody here. I, I know why we did what we did at Red Hawk, but I do have to share with you. So many people ask for that old driveway that goes backward. It's just.
On the north side?
Yeah. If I get, and he's like, well, did you vote on that, Mrs. Reed? You know, that kind of thing. But I'm just sort of out there.
Yeah. That has been part of some early conversations that looked at what the road improvement package was to be the last important of the overall line. And we've heard some of the same things and it's uh, it'll be part of the conversation for sure.
Yeah, the athletic buses and end up there a while. There you go.
Well, I will, I witnessed a two-track through there a couple of days and then things were congested. I watched about thirty vehicles were actually there and jumped the curb and went in just to get through because they didn't want to.
But we did it in such a, as it is to enhance safety and security.
Right.
And to try, if, again, if people are acting and behaving uh thoughtfully, uh rationally, uh it truly is better. Is it less convenient? Yes. It is. It's always less convenient to drive through a parking lot um at Meyer or wherever and drive down the lines uh compared to just driving straight across. But we, it's not a lake. You know, we have to run to them. We can't just drive wherever we want. We have to follow some, some lots of board cuts. But not everyone thinks the way I do. So that's not a problem.
We'll keep sharing those comments. Do your best. There you go. Any other thoughts? All right. Do we have any more attachments or women up?
Thank you for the reminder, Steve.
Yeah. Okay, so we are moving on to the annual school bond loan application and Marty and Scott are presenting.
I'll let Marty lead on this since I uh typically lead on it.
You guys, thank you.
Thank you for nice guy on July ten. So this is uh an annual uh application that the district does each uh, the start of each fiscal year. Last year we were in the repay mode of school bond loan fund. Uh, this year with the addition of the two thousand twenty-three uh series two bond, we are reverting back into borrowing mode. Uh, so this is the application that will be, we need to submit to the states uh indicating that we intend to borrow, I believe, about eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars to meet our debt service uh obligations throughout the school year. We'll need to borrow. We won't need to borrow in the November payment, but come May is when we'll have to borrow that eight hundred thousand dollars to meet our obligation. Um, this is a normal uh districts across the state participate in this program. Um, as we go through the life of our bond issuances, um, we will maintain the seven mils that we levy, um, but our um debt service payments will start to go down and at that point we'll start to pay back the state what we owe until we get to the point where we can start bringing down that seven mils. Um, the, you know, at a certain point, six mils will be enough to cover our debt service requirement. The following year might be uh five and a half. So that is what this uh application is representing, that annual application to borrow and state to meet our uh debt service requirements.
Any questions? And I think we need Tracy to try and signature on that.
Right.
Marty preserved that. And that's what everyone's been kind of for that. So we, so we should get that to that way.
We were having the meeting for the construction bonds, but then this was just a convenient opportunity for us to review on it a second time.
Yeah. I do need to submit it tomorrow.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you. It's on for action. Discussion item C, uh spring and summer twenty twenty-three new policy recommendations, revisions. Second read not on fraction tonight and Scott's up to bat.
Yeah, thank you. So there are a couple of uh very minor adjustments that are included in this collection of artifacts that are slightly different than the collection of artifacts on July ten. Uh, one is just a, an order piece. I moved um policy ninety-one sixty up into that collection of uh policies related to tobacco use because it, even though it's public attendance at school events, it's still related to uh tobacco use. So I tried to make that adjustment uh just for your uh just for the ease of your thinking a little bit. Um, the other, there, there is a new policy uh recommendation that we're asking you to consider. Um, and that's item sixty-three twenty, the purchasing of goods and services. Uh, and really that's based on a recommendation that Marty has coming out of the business office. Um, so I'll let him take that one and then we'll uh we can respond to any questions that you have about that.
Uh, yeah, so I, I've been reviewing our purchase policy uh pretty closely and I noted the one thing that is a little bit different um with Cedar Spring versus uh I checked all of our neighboring districts, Rockford's part of Kent City. Um, they, our policy stipulates the purchase of supplies, materials, equipment and services. Um, and then it references that state bid threshold that they come out with each year. Currently it's at just over twenty-eight thousand dollars. That state policy does not um apply to services. So consulting services, software agreements, any type of those purchase services. That is how Kent City Rockford is part of. Their policy does not mention the services on the um you know, between five thousand and ten thousand, getting uh competitive bids between ten thousand and up to the state threshold uh having three sealed competitive bids. Um, so it gives, it gives us the ability to not do those competitive bids for a service. We would still, uh, we might do a competitive bid, but we could also just go solicit a quote from a, a vendor that we previously worked with. We know the quality of their work and they've worked on all of our systems. Um, so we can just approach a vendor for that contractual service. If it exceeds the twenty-eight thousand dollars, then we would bring it to the board for approval. That, that's the biggest chain uh proposed recommendation for the uh purchasing of goods and services. Strike out the, the services from those couple of lines and then I added a line stating for contracted services shall be negotiated either verbally or by an RFP or through the bid process as determined by the superintendent. And then such services that cost more than that state bid threshold or uh uh goods and services, uh supplies and goods, we would bring it to the board for approval.
Just a question about that. So how many for services greater than ten thousand dollars but less than that state threshold? We have a lot of those or what kind of things does that encompass? Just thinking about the impact of that change.
Um, a lot of the software services that we use that we for all intents and purposes, we're not going to ch- move away. It would be a, a monumental undertaking. So our student information systems, uh munis, our financial software. Um, we have a lot of those uh software agreements that do fall between that ten thousand and twenty-eight thousand dollar mark, audit services, uh legal counsel, uh because it is, is cumulative as well. So you pay our retainer to true, we compare first on uh legal expenses. We can exceed, start exceeding that ten thousand dollars pretty quick.
Just curious what kind of contracts we were looking at and what the, what the scope was between ten and twenty. So thank you.
Yeah.
Similarly, facilities operations, it doesn't take long if you have a painter, for example, here. When you hit this hallway and while you're here, can you look at this ceiling and this catch that wall and you can get over ten. Pretty quick on something like that or like, with Ridgeline's been a fantastic partner for us, took very good care of us with our access control, our counter systems and um, yeah, if they have to dig into one of our servers and do a little backend work, plus help us with one of our parts, like if it's not working, we're required, you know, it doesn't happen a lot, but sometimes, yeah, we get there, you know.
And what, what a change in striking out competitive bid for uh purchases that exceed ten thousand. Well, competitive bid would be posted uh to signal or do a uh newspaper ad soliciting quotes. Um, I changed that to formal, formal quotes. So we can just reach out to three vendors and say, hey, this is, this will work. Please submit a bid. Or we could also still do that competitive bid. Uh, but it's yeah, sometimes in the interest of timing or sometimes if it's not going to be a huge project, a vendor will say, I'm not going through that whole bid process. It's not worth my time. I'll submit a bid or a quote, but I'm not going to go through the formal bid process. So sometimes it limits the number of responses that you get as well. Um, and then this change really, when I looked at our administrative guidelines, which are kind of how the district implements the board policies, the administrative guidelines were more in line with what I'm presenting here, saying, you know, we, for contractual services, we can get uh informal quotes, get it verbally, face at the discretion of, of the superintendent and what is the best approach to take. So this brings our board policy in line with the administrative guidelines. And it's consistent. Would make it consistent with our neighboring districts.
So just to clarify, striking that competitive bid process, but still a process of receiving multiple bids.
Receiving multiple quotes or estimates for, it could be a, a Smithy's formal request for bids and we'll do a bid opening.
The rationale and background helps. I mean, I'm thinking back to uh the public forums that we did Scott a couple of years ago, right? We, we met some folks downstairs and we were asked specifically how the bid process works. So understanding the background and the why and the especially like with the IT where it actually costs you more to go another direction. Having that kind of background and that thinking would help us to be able to answer our, you know, friends and neighbors who may be asking us questions. So appreciate that.
Yeah, good example. We need to replace our servers. They're ten years out of date, putting us, uh, making us vulnerable to cyber attacks. So I, Colin, our servers are here, but they're managed by the ISD. Um, and they have a, they have a vendor that they use a specific type of server. He's like, can we get this? It's like, let's get three more quote, two more quotes, see where it comes. If it, we know what this is, we need to know where does this land compared to what else is out there. Uh, it came, the other two quotes came in higher than the one that ISD had brought to us. So we're moving forward with the uh, the ISD's preferred server.
Just uh expanding on a little bit more, hope it's not too, I just, just to think, expand the thinking on. If it would actually be more expensive to switch vendors and you continue to follow the competitive bid process, wouldn't you still end up with the same vendor who we were with because it was more cost effective to remain with? Does that make sense? Is it? It doesn't seem like the outcome would change, even if you were doing the competitive bid, you know?
Yeah, I think the competitive bid is the kind of, there's, there's a lot more administrative tasks by both the district and the vendor. And at some point, you know, it's if it's not a large enough project, some of those vendors will say, I'm not.
Not going through the paperwork process.
Paperwork process.
Okay.
And you can actually end up paying more, paying more and having less, fewer options. Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions or thoughts?
Okay, two more items. Uh, so uh policy recognition eighty-three ninety items on district uh property. We've talked a little bit about, um, you know, we do have instances where we have fish in aquariums and science classrooms or we have, you know, small animals for science or our FFA uh students may have animals on campus. And the proposal that was put before us really was very restrictive as far as the requirements. Um, I couldn't find any language that was less restrictive that made sense. And so I did um, I take a, take a swing at uh trying to come up with some language that would provide the district with greater cover. Uh, and so you'll see that um, the item in question down at the bottom of that attachment, uh, the uh, an opportunity for us, something to consider is um the statement taken into consideration that some animals can cause or exacerbate, exacerbate a allergenic reactions, spread bacterial infections or cause damage and create hazard if they escape from confinement, the, and I struck principal, the superintendent, because I would be working with the principal anyway. So the superintendent may, may permit non-service animals to be present in classrooms or on campus to support curriculum, curriculum-related projects and activities only and instead of using the word under, I struck that only after considering the following conditions. Uh, so it would permit uh us to, if, if, to me, it felt like we needed uh a veterinarian or health certification for the animal, we could require that. It gives us some latitude uh that we could follow in order to maybe approach this in a more reasonable way. Um, and so that, that's one uh question that came out of our discussion uh on the uh, from our meeting on the tenth. The other question that I'm not yet, I don't yet have resolution on is just uh the, the position or the policy language in regard to animals on campus. You know, pedestrians walking their dogs on campus or walking their cats or their goats, whatever it is that people are walking. Um, you know, I, I've yet to find language that would uh be thoughtful or supportive of those instances. Um, but this is a work in progress. Uh, I'll continue to work over the next couple of weeks, uh hopefully either coming up with some language for your consideration or um, uh creating some language uh for us to consider that's reasonable, you know, that provides measures of protection for our students and our staff uh when they're on campus. To me, there's a difference between when we're in session, when we have school, uh when they have students on campus and after school on the weekends, those types of things. So we want to be thoughtful. Um, we don't want policy language that we're not going to actually be able to enforce uh because that weakens the entire system of policy language. So um, I'm still going to, continuing to do research or I'll have some more language for you to consider in our next meeting. Uh, and then the last thing, um, the administrative guidelines on um on purchase cards, uh Shannon, I think, asked how many purchase cards uh we had issued throughout the campus. Um, and when Marty got back from his vacation, he verified that we have twenty-nine purchase cards uh out there that the staff members are currently using. So so we can touch base there.
Thank you.
Scott, for the non-service animals in school and on, on school grounds, did you, can we touch base or maybe you already did touch base with Brent to see what kind of things in the past we've done, what, what kind of impact if that language kind of fits or if there's any conflict he sees or did you get any feedback from me? Maybe just touch base to see. Yeah, just, just to see, because I, I don't know, like if somebody's showing animals, I don't know if they currently get, you know, vet, you know, examinations prior to showing care animals. So if he's doing something, I don't, I don't know if they're doing anything on campus. So I'm speaking out of ignorance, but just, just to kind of ask, would that impact our, our vocational programs?
No, exactly. And that's why the recommendation that I have is we can, those are recommendations
Okay.
that I can.
Consider.
And it can be a consideration versus a requirement. Uh, but I did look at districts like Lowell, like, uh, Caladonia, like, uh, Montague. Uh, like Ravenna, districts that have, uh, you know, a strong FFA programs. Just to see what their language was and their language was the recommended, the recommended language. So.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, you're so very, very welcome. So that's all we have so far on the, um. Board updates or the policy language updates unless you have any questions or wonders.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to discussion item D, the overnight trip request for the chamber choir retreat.
So that's the information that Linda and Jen presented, uh, at the January ten meeting. I included those attachments in. To board book for you to review if you have any questions. And I'll do my best to answer them. If possible, we would like to get them their request approved this evening so that they can go ahead and book the, uh. Book the Camp Henry, but we understand that if you have questions, uh, we can, that's the most important.
All right, moving on to the security camera upgrade proposal. Russell, I'm on.
Yeah, well, um, yeah, just. So, yeah, well, both for, um. Um, material and for project management. So, uh, over what a year ago, I guess, about, we started talking about using, um. These grant funds for potential camera work and less than that, you know, six months ago. We didn't worry about it that, that.
We didn't learn that about that when we were going to be.
So, um, within what the total amount of the grant, I don't remember, but we decided about three hundred. You can mark what three hundred thousand for the camera project.
Yeah, we were receiving three hundred and seventy-five thousand, uh, for section ninety-seven funds for that we use for school safety. Uh, related initiatives, um. Adding security cameras to your district was one of the allowable expenditures that, uh, under section ninety-seven. And that is one, one area we are lagging behind with other districts for sure is our coverage that we have throughout our campus.
And we're real excited to hear that because a lot of these funds, um, that we've been excluded from adding cameras. Uh, due to some of the language requirements around, um, I would monitor those cameras. We don't have staff sitting and watching these cameras twenty-four seven. Uh, that was required in the MSP grants last year. Um. So we're excited to do this and start working with our, um, our partners with Motorola, who owns the, um. The vigilance system that we use on campus and then also Presidio, um, who's a really good partner with us on the both the camera and the access control. Understanding what does that three hundred thousand give us? How far can we go? Uh, we knew Beach was going to have a new system when we built that. So we weren't talking about Beach. High schools, system is in pretty good shape. So our really goals here were, um, middle school system is quite outdated and it was, um. It only kind of works within that building. So we doesn't talk to the rest of our camera and access control system. So we wanted to update middle school. We wanted to look at Cedar View, Cedar Trails and Red Hawk. Goals were perimeter, exterior perimeter of every building. So we could see all the entrances, all the happenings, the bus drop offs, everything around the building. Entrances, uh, major community points, cafeterias, gymnasiums. And then all across sections of all the hallways. Just wanted to make sure we're seeing down all the hallways, past the restroom entrances, um. And what, so we were able to prioritize our, our cameras through the, um, those four buildings. Get kind of our wish list together and then, um, we came back and the numbers came back, uh, the material went through the, um. RMC pricing, we stayed, so we got state pricing on material and, um, we were, we were able to do most of what we wanted with that. Three hundred thousand dollars got us really far. Not only does it just fit the camera on the, on the building, but it also gives us the backend in that building. To set that system up, connect it to our access control. So adding another camera here or there in the future would be considered a little less expensive. The system's there. We just have, we need to add another touch point how we can. So the, um, numbers, um, include, yeah, you have right there. So that column on the left, that's our actual hardware. That's actually the stuff that we need in the building and that. There's cover of what I just mentioned. And then there's a quote from Presidio on the right. This is project management. This is just helping us get the. Whole system up and going, everything on the backend, all of these cameras need, um, an ID and address. Those addresses all have to talk to each other, to the server and all of those have to talk to our assistant area in the place where the high school. And then we need to make sure all the cameras are talking to the right access control. So when, when somebody swipes in. Cameras know what it's looking at and, uh, everything's talking to each other. Um, and then. Alexa in our office is scheduling those doors every single day. So we know. Everything just works in conjunction. So that's what that six, six thousand dollar number is, um, and. That's what we're just talking about. That's one of those numbers where I'm, I'm, I'm asking if we can just award that to Presidio. If we've been this out to other companies, there's a few others that will do it. Alexa and I know, we're going to be on the phone with Presidio saying. This got messed up or this is wrong. How do you, how do we get this right? Presidio's going to help. They're going to do it right the first time. And it's, they're going to give us a good value at that number. So that last, um, that last slide there, I think, Marty. Um, again, materials did it, um, compared to the bid at the GOSI pricing. Level, a few points there about how Presidio's been a good long-term partner. Uh, I was telling Marty who were writing this, uh, Presidio text, they'll swing by. Say hi to Alexa when they're just driving by campus, maybe thing, okay? That thing we did last week is it working? And we never see it, those kinds, those kind of things. They're just taking care of us and they're just good partners. Call them on the phone once a week, maybe. Yeah, and unless it's something we actually have to plan and schedule for them to come out, we never, we never see it work, any of that stuff. We just take them with us. Um, they know what they're doing. They're leaders in the industry, especially in our area. And, um, they know our systems inside and outside. Not only that, if I asked Vigilant, what role do we should work with and say, are you kidding me? Excited if this number can get us really coverage.
And one thing to note, so what we're talking about are two components of this project, the third being the actual install, which Russell will be getting some quotes from.
Yeah, so I think this approval, then we'll need to go out and we'll competitively get the install test. Screwing the camera actually into the building and make sure wires connected in on that. That won't be covered in this grant.
And don't they have preferred vendors for that that will probably bid on it?
Um, there's, yeah, there's a, there's a number in our area, including, including the right around the corner.
I have a question that's barely related. It just reminded me of something that I read recently. Um, I read about. Some sort of, it's not a camera, but some sort of contraption that is put in high school bathrooms that can detect vaping and can detect like. Arguing voices and that kind of stuff. Is that something we have? Is that something we're looking into? Is that? See how it's barely related, but it just.
So I'd ask that. It is not something we have and it's been a, it's been something we've learned a lot about this last year. So our high school administrators have, um, not wanted general vape detectors that kind of buzz their phone. But based on past experience, their phone goes off every five minutes or ten minutes and then they run the bathroom and notice it. And so it's highly ineffective system. We've learned just with last number of months that the system we're installing in the high school does have those kind of devices that will. Will trigger the system, hey, there's smoke, there's, since vaping, and then it'll just trigger that camera. To report the, like, the previous two minutes and the two minutes after, whatever parameters reset. And then that can go to our administrator's email box or we can just flag it in the system or do later, however we want to set it up. Um, there's those kinds of, yeah, shouting, uh, loud noises. We've even learned lately, we can program our cameras. Um, either all of our cameras or individual cameras say, if a lot of people are moving in one direction, it's just true. It can trigger the system, send us texts for the group of guys.
And just to be clear, there's not a camera in the bathroom.
No, no, no.
Cameras that are outside looking at people coming in and out. I just want, and I need that, I just wanted to make that clear to everybody else. There's no camera in the bathroom working.
But the camera that is closest to the entrance to the bathroom, right? It doesn't look into the bathroom, it moves down past the bathroom and we can connect that device with it. So this is something that we discussed later in this last year within our safety team meeting. And it'll continue to be something with that. And again, with these. This system in place in each building, those kind of add-ons, relatively easy.
Great, great. Thank you.
Now, I, when we were, when I was at Sparta, they had a pretty robust camera system and just the ability to, you know, I. Already watching, seeing somebody drive the wrong way down the, the parking lot at our new ECC building. We were able to track, track that vehicle all the way around, you know, campus. Identify who it was and make a phone call. The, the, um, the assistant superintendent knew exactly who it was and called them and said, hey. You can't be driving the wrong way down our bus lane. We've got little kids running around. Please don't do that. Um, we also had some vandulids. We were able to provide that to, um, the Sparta PD. Twenty-four hours later, they have those, uh, minors and, well, a few of them weren't minors, but they had those kids in custody. They were at their homes. Um, and, you know, so the, we figure out pretty quickly who, who was vandalizing. Breaking in on numerous occasions and vandalizing, uh, some district properties. So. Unfortunately, that's what happened. It was definitely very, you know, useful tool to have.
Another random question. So we're putting cameras in other buildings where we haven't had cameras. What was the discussion that I know we're not going to have somebody for the. What they wanted, but so kind of what are we doing? What was the discussion?
Yep, so, um. Well, there were multiple discussions. One kind of at the safety team level, just kind of. A general desire to be able to try things like Marty was mentioning, just have eyes on a, have eyes on our bus lane. And they have eyes on the drop off just for safety in case an incident that comes up instead of. The bus driver's word versus the student's word or something like that. We have visual confirmation of what's happening. Um, and the buildings themselves, uh, working with our, um, our building administrators who help, uh, help them. Them helping me understand where and where the areas we'd like to have eyes if we need them, like where are our high rates of incidences and so. Red Hawk, for example, in the gym cafeteria, that was a, you know, the big one. Um, most of our, most of the time we look at cameras, it's post-incident. It must be, they would go back and out and verify what's happened. Um, once in a while, our SRO, if he knows something's happening, maybe he gets a tip that something's happening in the cafeteria at this time. He might find it beneficial if he's, when he moves himself in that situation, he can kind of watch it from the camera. Uh, sometimes, um, he's done that on the, um, building administrator could, could do that as well. Um, our office staff would be able to see people approaching the building. Um, so there's times we, we got to be beneficial for safety or just verification of who's here, who's, who's outside the building. Um, someone said there's someone on the backside of the building trying to get in. Like just to see who that is, we're just sent someone back there to, to get in. So there, there are times we've had them proactive. If, or we would, if we could, um. Yeah, even this last, this last year, students leaving the high school, we were able to verify who that was when that happened. Um, within a minute, uh, two, that's leaving. We didn't have cameras through the rest of the district to see the event, but we can see the district.
Any other questions? Thank you. All right, discussion item X, EBLI remediation training. Scott and Marty.
Yeah, so, um, this one is on there really because of, it's a quantity, uh, or a volume of utilization. So, um, what EBLI training is, is it's that workshop that many of our teachers are going to be participating in. To help them learn the intervention strategies and to help them, uh, learn how to utilize the tools. Uh, that will in turn help our students, uh, become more successful as readers. And so, um, normally this wouldn't be an item that the board would see. It's a three thousand dollar, um. Purchase that is a combination of the materials. And the supplies that the teacher would use, but then also pays for the training that the teacher would attend. In order to learn how to use the tools. So it's really a bundled price. Their teacher's learning how to use the tools and they're also getting the tools. Uh, for that three thousand dollar price tag. Um, the challenge is, is you can see there are two attachments under this item in board book. Um, the first is just an email, um, from Marty, uh, just explaining, uh, why it's here before you tonight is it's three thousand dollars. Per purchase, but we have enough teachers who are going to be engaging in the training that that number. Quickly escalates to seventy-two thousand dollars and, um, uh, if we, uh. Submitted enrollment or submitted, um, application for each of those teachers to extend, extend the training individually. You'd see thirty-two thousand, or thirty-two, sorry, twenty-four instances at three thousand dollars per instant. Because we want to, uh, apply to get all of these teachers enrolled at the same time. It's no longer a three thousand dollar, uh, expense. It's a seventy-two thousand dollar expense. Um, so because we're bundling it, we brought it to your attention to provide greater clarity, giving you the opportunity to ask any questions and. We'll do our best to fill in the blanks.
So do we get sketch credit? Do, can the teachers get sketch credits for this too? So we get more value for our money?
Yeah, I think that's a great, great question. I know, um.
I want to say yes, but I'd have to check on that. I'm not the expert on this one.
I think it would because it's professional development related to instruction. But again, there are specific guidelines that the Michigan Department of that has listed. That things that would qualify for SECHs and what things would not qualify for SC, SECHs. I would think it would as well, but.
I think they do the new things we can pull.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
I know, uh, Jen and Stacy have done a great job presenting kind of where our students were at and where we had wanted to go and kind of the flight path, where COVID had interrupted us. They did a great job presenting the data. Is this one of the tactics that they were using to kind of close that gap? Just as we're talking about, what do we get? What's the district getting for that money? It's really, I'm assuming it's really one of the tactics to close that.
Yeah, you bet. So, um, if you remember back when Jen presented in June. Um, there are three tiers of interventions. So tier one is really targeted at eighty percent of your students. And it's what's done on a regular basis by teachers like Kerry in their classrooms. So they make adjustments, they make modifications, they provide. Unique experiences, unique opportunities for small groups here, small groups there. Um, so tier one interventions are just that eighty percent of the work that is done to support. Uh, or excuse me, the work that's done to support eighty percent of our students. Tier two interventions then, um, are really targeted at that, that next fifteen percent of learners. And those interventions are a step above and beyond what is happening in the, in the normal classroom. So. Uh, the tier two interventions would include, um, you know, reading intervention would include work that's going to be done. By those traveling teachers, those reading. by those traveling teachers, those reading intervention teachers at Cedar Trails. These are the tools that would be used for tier one intervention, but really to be the, the kind of the power tool set within that tier two collection of interventions. And then the tier three interventions, the special education, these tools will be used in those classrooms on a daily basis for just reg, I mean, that's gonna be the, the, the meat and potatoes of their instruction on top of the, the core curriculum that they're, that they're utilizing, so yeah, really, this is the, this is the way, this is the set of tools that we'll use to help provide those unique experiences for students who need that in the classroom and beyond, as far as interventions go.
Yeah, thanks, Scott, especially for anybody who might be tuning in online and catch this one, but didn't get a chance to have the benefit of the presentation, and you appreciate it.
Thank you.
It's on for action, let's call for any questions for verification. Thank you, all right, moving on, we're done with discussion, and we move on to public comments. This is the time that the board will clear any public comment for three minutes, and do you have any takers? This is Gus, and this is.
No one came to me.
Anybody from the audience, you know, there are three minutes. All right, going one, just going twice, all right, we'll move on to public comment. So we're moving to action for this evening, the first action item is Beach Elementary School construction bid, and I would entertain a motion for as presented.
So moved, support.
Any discussion? Having none, Vice President Schaffner?
Yes.
Secretary Slager?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore?
Yes.
Trustee Vanderheide?
Yes.
Trustee Patton?
Yes.
President Reed, yes, motion carries. Action item B, annual school bond loan application, I would entertain a motion for as presented.
So moved, support.
Discussion? Having none, Vice President Schaffner?
Yes.
Secretary Slager?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore?
Yes.
Trustee Vanderheide?
Yes.
Trustee Patton?
Yes.
President Reed, yes, motion carries. Action item C, overnight trip request, chamber choir retreat, I would entertain a motion for as presented.
So moved.
Support.
Discussion? Having none, Vice President Schaffner?
Yes.
Secretary Slager?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore?
Yes.
Trustee Vanderheide?
Yes.
Trustee Patton?
Yes.
President Reed, yes, motion carries. The last action item for tonight is the EBLI remediation training, and I would entertain a motion for as presented.
So moved.
Support.
Discussion? Having none, Vice President Schaffner?
Yes.
Secretary Slager?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore?
Yes.
Trustee Vanderheide?
Yes.
Trustee Patton?
Yes.
President Reed, yes, with the great hope that the teachers get sketches. Communications, you are up to date with what I have, I don't have any, any link from the public or anything?
I'll be attending the legislative webinar, webinar, I forget the official title of it, but in a couple weeks.
The only thing I have is I've got a meeting tomorrow morning with Ian Kocler from Trum Law. Ian specializes in helping districts with either any type of election work that they go through, and one of the things that is on our radar, our eighteen mil non-property or non-resident property tax comes up for, is up for expiration in December of twenty twenty-four. And so I'm just gonna get that conversation started with Ian to, you know, determine what our steps would be for us to potentially look at some different opportunities to put that proposal on the ballot. Because it, it's something that, without the eighteen mil non-homestead property tax, it would be devastating to our budget. And so I'll be just working with Ian to determine timelines, what our opportunities are, and I'll be presenting that information to you for consideration. So the earliest possibility, potentially we could get it on the ballot for November twenty twenty-three, if we, you know, we can renew it at any time, ahead of the expiration, it's just critical that we renew it before the expiration. So I'll provide you with some communication, most likely writing after one meeting.
Thank you.
So just so you're aware, the storms, last week we learned that we had automatic fire things above our high school stage. These are four sections of double doors that open when there's a fire to lose the gas, smoke out of that tall space. One was failed open, so we had rain in the stage. When we went to examine that, we learned that that one and another one were not functional. So something we need to get fixed, and get fixed fast, we're efforting, you know, who can actually fix these, we're talking to four different companies right now, so. And we have someone, if someone should come out to look at them, hopefully they're serviceable, if we have to replace them, it could be costly. Don't know, I don't even want to guess the number right now, but it's also one of these things that we need to have fixed, so just, it's not safe for that space to come out of function if we did have a fire.
So did it happen during the storm, so can insurance cover it?
No, I don't believe so, there, there's evidence that they had failed before, and there's a temporary fix that never got coming in first. So we don't know when that happens, how long ago that happened, or how long they might have been. So they're basically, two of them basically tied shut, because they we just wanted to dive and go and do the correction right away, but we just wanted to what you feel, or.
And there, there, there is wording in the board policy in case of emergency purchases that allow this district to continue operating. The superintendent may act without board approval, I think this would fall under that kind of asterisk on the board policy of, well, this is a fire code, thing that we need to potentially address, and take care of it as soon as possible.
I'm, I'm still hopeful we can just spend a couple thousand dollars to get it just serviced and not replaced, so, yes. But we just wanted to mention it here, since we just kind of understood what was happening.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you for sharing. Okay, moving on for planning, our next meetings are busy ones, because it's the hiring season and getting ready back to go back to school, August fourteenth, and then return right around for a quick August twenty-first, so two back-to-backs in, in August. And we're gonna be going on the floor after this, if anybody, sadly, if you want to walk with us, or if anybody wants to join us, be welcome to do so. And with that, we will stand adjourned at seven thirty, thank you.